I'd like to call to order the Bothell Planning Commission for this evening, Wednesday, November 16th, 2016, at the 6:00 PM start time, which is a new time for us. All the commissioners are here and accounted for with the exception of Commissioner Cave, who is absent and excused. And there are no non-agenda public comments this evening. There are three sets of minutes to approve, so I don't know if anybody needs some time to look through those.
I'll just comment that I did notice a couple of typos on the April 13th minute that I can bring to your attention. On page two of two, the second text box deliberations is misspelled, so we'll correct that. And in the third text box down, vleat is misspelled, so we'll correct that as well.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes with those two corrections.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the minutes stand approved with those corrections. And no new business this evening? Or is there some new business this evening at all, Dave?
No.
Okay. With that, there's no public hearing. We'll go ahead and open the study session. It will be led tonight by Dave Boyd, the senior planner with the City of Bothell.
Okay, thank you. And so I guess this is actually new business, but since this is the first that we've brought this item to you, this has to do with the 2016 miscellaneous downtown code amendments that council did refer to the planning commission. We actually took, I think, seven potential, or maybe even eight potential downtown code amendments to council as part of the 2016 docket. And they declined to initiate one. They kept, it was seven, they kept three for themselves, and then these three are the ones that they referred to planning commission. So I just have a brief presentation. I'll go to the podium for that, and then we can have a discussion. So I think as we've noted in the past with the downtown code, this was a fairly significant departure from the way that we've treated codes before going to a place, a form-based code. And as we've applied that, as to be expected, we've discovered issues as we've implemented projects, and those continue. So the issues that we're bringing to you tonight, the first group of plan developments that we've had downtown have been in the downtown core and downtown neighborhood districts. We're starting now to see interest in developing in the downtown transition district, and so that's raising some new issues that we hadn't encountered previously. And we're also starting to see some smaller infill projects also in the downtown transition district. So all of these examples that I'm bringing tonight are within the downtown transition district, but some of the issues and code amendments could apply to also to other districts that are somewhat similar, like the general downtown corridor or the SR 522 corridor. So what this, just to introduce this, in the upper right here is a very early rendered site plan for what we call Lot O, the parcel north of the old Dawson Building, south of Popkiny Stadium. And it shows, and this is actually a split zone lot, it's downtown neighborhood or DN on the east and downtown transition on the west. So it shows more mixed-use apartment buildings on the downtown neighborhood zone sites and a form of townhouse, sort of semi courthouse-style town home development on the west. And one of the provisions of the code says that all buildings shall be oriented, are along streets and oriented towards the streets. So when we started getting these kinds of developments, especially on a larger lot like this, it does have a building back here that isn't technically along the street. It's separated from the street by a public space. And we have interpreted the code to allow this, since this is a required public open space. But it has also come up in some other developments, like the one on the lower right. This was a proposal for a corner site at 103rd and 185th, where they wanted to put townhomes in clusters of two and three. And so there's five separate buildings on the site, and one of the buildings would actually be essentially oriented to the alley, not to a street. So again, our interpretation, I think we could allow this by saying that there are buildings oriented to all the street facades and allow a building toward the back of the lot. But it is something that we thought would be good to at least look at amending the code to explicitly allow that in certain situations. Another issue brought up by this plan was the requirement for 20-foot space between buildings. This developer, or this architect, proposed in this scheme to have these two and three unit buildings so that almost all of the units would have the opportunity for windows on three sides. Only these two middle units would only have windows on the front and back sides. But to do that, they were proposing reducing the space between buildings in a couple places to around 10 feet, even a little less than 10 feet. Basically, the width of a parking potentially is down to the width of a parking stall. And part of the argument was that the building codes, the international building code and the international residential code do allow this kind of building separation. Why don't we let that control rather than this 20-foot separation requirement? And then another example that illustrates more the building frontage and orientation requirement, this is on Hall Road, on the edge of the downtown sub area, but it is in the downtown transition districts in the lower right. It is a historic home, a large lot with a historic home on it, a house that we have determined is eligible for the historic register. And the proposal was to keep the home and then build out on the backside townhomes or small apartment-style development to achieve the zoned capacity there. And in this case, again, we said we could probably allow this, perhaps with some modifications, since part of the frontage is required open space. Part of the frontage could be part of their public open space with the gazebo, or perhaps a better solution would be to shift the access drive a little bit and make this another single-family home or a duplex that duplicated the scale and massing of the existing home to sort of continue that street frontage, which to the south continues as a single-family residential neighborhood. So again, this one has not come in yet for building permits. These, well, neither has the one in the lower right, and we're processing building permits for the lot just south of this one, which is on, is shown here. This is what we refer to as Lot N, the lot where the Dawson Building was, on the corner of 96th and 182nd. And again, this development does have a solid row of buildings fronted on and oriented towards the streets on three sides. This is actually not a public street, will be a private street. But that leaves these four buildings that don't, you know, in a strict construction, meet that requirement that all buildings be sited along streets and oriented towards them. We feel that, again, that as long as they do build up the street frontage, this is a type of development that should be allowed. And again, we can interpret our way around this to allow this, but, and in fact, this one is going through permitting now, and we are, but we think it'd be better to be able to make the code explicitly allow this sort of situation. Again, back to the corner lot, the same developer and architect is also looking at a lot on that same street frontage separated by one lot, that again, their original proposal was two buildings with two to three townhomes, one of those buildings oriented toward the alley, and so therefore not toward a street. So should we make provisions to allow this? For the corner lot, the architect, wanting to move forward in advance of any code amendments for this, has opted to propose a single building, U-shaped building, that will have frontage along both streets, and then units that are oriented towards the streets, and on the east side oriented towards a walkway along the property line. So that's, this is basically what the current code kind of pushes the development towards. That also raised some issues with the maximum building length requirement that they've addressed by creating their required public open space on the corner, which reduced the width of this building. They're also creating some parking spaces here that, so they're not filling that whole side of the frontage. On the infill site, again, at the top here is their initial proposal with the alley-oriented units, and then two options to make it conforming, strictly conforming with the code as it is now, by making it a single building, an L-shaped building in this configuration, and just a straight shot of four townhomes in the bottom configuration. And again, the architect has made the argument that the building codes allow for, well, actually, let me take a pause there. So that kind of addresses the building orientation issue. Related to that, at least on these schemes, is the building setback requirements. The current downtown transition code allows, it does allow zero setback development in DT with an agreement in the form of an easement from the adjacent property owner. You can build right up to the lot, and then that property owner could continue a row of townhouses, houses along the lot line. But otherwise, buildings need to be set back five feet without any living space windows and 10 feet with living space windows. Again, that's more than the building codes require, and the architects made the case that we should take a look at that, and because it does, on these small infill lots, create some challenges for them. So in this scheme, at the bottom, for example, they wouldn't be able to place windows on this facade, the five-foot setback, and they'd have to rely on this further inset portion of the building for any daylighting into the interior of these spaces. Of course, the front one could have windows facing the street. So those are two of the issues. And then there's the space between buildings issue that we talked about, that pushes towards the single larger building rather than the multiple buildings. And then unrelated to that, or the downtown transition district, is a potential amendment to address our limits on canopies. Currently, we allow canopies to extend into public right-of-way up to six feet and balconies up to two feet. This is the original proposal for the junction, which is under construction now. There, they wanted to have their second floor office space with a wraparound balcony that also serves as a canopy for the ground floor retail space below. So they basically wanted us to treat this as what they called a habitable canopy that could extend the full six feet instead of the two feet allowed for balconies. They had a further challenge in that when the right-of-way was laid out for this, it followed the curve of the curb line. So the wraparound, the corner of the wraparound actually extends seven feet beyond into the public right-of-way. So as it's being built right now, it's being, they had to divide this balcony into two balconies, even though it's most likely going to be leased out to a single tenant. And I think they're still interested in the possibility of connecting that balcony if we can get agreement through an interpretation, or potentially even the potential for acquiring that little corner of the right-of-way that would eliminate that overhang issue. But it raises an issue, whether it winds up applying to this site or not, it raises an issue that we wanted to bring to the planning commission for consideration. So with that, I'm gonna end my presentation, join you at the table, and then, but I'll be able to come back up here and look at, work our way through these images. So I'm gonna go back to the introductory image now, so we can start there and work our way through.
Thanks, Dave, for that presentation. Yeah, we may have to ask you to go up there a few times to move around the slides. I guess I'm gonna recommend that we just kind of move through it and just parts. It seems to me there's, it seems to me there's like three different parts to this. And so, yeah, we can go ahead and start on the first section, I guess, with pages, I guess, yeah, one, two, three. I guess one and two do have a little overlap. The third one, with regards to the canopies, I think that's quite separate, but if that's okay with everybody, we'll just kind of work on number one and number two together. But we'll start on the first part. So the first part says, clarify regulations requiring buildings to front on streets to allow back-of-lot buildings when other buildings provide adequate street frontage. It may be possible to address the issue through a director's interpretation, but it would be best to clarify the requirement in the code. So with that, does anybody have anything they want to say with regards to that piece and the diagrams that Dave showed us? Chris Stebbin?
I understand the need for it, and I think it makes sense, but I'm wondering what the unintended consequences might be on future development, future architectural drawings that, you know, that we may not have thought about and kind of gone, oops, we didn't think through this. So do you have any sense as to what, you know, what the negative or the potential downside of making a code amendment as opposed to simply an interpretation would be?
I think the, the advantage of doing the code amendment is that we wouldn't have to explain to applicants when they come in that, oh, well, the code says that, but we've actually interpreted this way. So it actually puts it out there. The downside, I think, as long as we keep in the language, and I haven't, tonight I just wanted to lay out the issues and without actually presenting any code language for you to consider, I wanted to get your feedback before starting to draft the code language. But I think as long as we have strong code language, that every site has to have buildings or required public open space along the street frontage, and then allow the back of the site to develop with buildings that don't meet that, really meets the intent of the code in the first place, and would kind of signal right up front to developers that that is an option that they can explore.
Quick question about that. It seems like we're looking at the diagram in the upper right-hand corner, Lot O there. What would the alternative be for that? I guess the question I have is if you require all of the units to face, to face the street, then the alternative to that would be to build one big building, is that right? And then there'd be internal units that didn't face on the street, but that would be allowable, is that?
Well, on that particular site, that's a big enough site that they can and are meeting the 20-foot space between buildings requirement. So it wouldn't necessarily have to be one big building, they could still do separate buildings, but basically you'd have to flip-flop the open space along 96th and the building that's currently behind it. So you'd have that continuous frontage of buildings, separate buildings, along 96th, but then you would be burying the public open space in the middle of the development. And that is allowed by our regulations. Our regulations say that it has to be accessible by the sidewalk, but again, with the 20 feet between the buildings, there could be passages back to it. So it would basically become more of a courtyard-style development. But, and I think there's pluses and minuses to the public open space, I think, in that instance would be, feel a little bit more private and not so much part of the streetscape. And I think both are acceptable, could be done well, but we also think that this proposal would, shouldn't be precluded by the code, or even necessarily require an interpretation, that if we can do some small tweaks to the code, we can give designers the flexibility to approach it either way.
So on that, it looks to me like, just casually looking at this, that of the five buildings that are on that, on that particular section, that only two of them actually have openings onto the public right-of-way, is that right?
Well, let me get up to the podium.
Okay.
So we're looking at this one?
No, the one to the left, the, no, I'm, the upper right, but that bill, the particular cluster buildings right there.
Oh, okay.
Those five buildings.
Yes. So, well, this is a public right-of-way here, too. So three of the buildings are actually along and oriented to the public streets. I guess the other way is we could have them develop this access drive as a street, and then they would all comply, but that was not the designer's intent, and it's kind of a workaround and not a necessary one.
Right. I agree with you. I guess I'm, I don't understand what, I don't think you'd want that central road to be public right-of-way either for a number of reasons, but it seems like, okay, so if those two buildings are out of compliance, it seems like the current code is just really restrictive. I mean, it really ties the hands, because this, as the code exists now, this would not be possible, you wouldn't see anything like this on there, it seems like, without a director's interpretation.
Right. A strict interpretation of the code would make this non-compliant, and so that's, and that's exactly why we're bringing this. When we run into issues where we find, feel that the code is as written, you know, strict interpretation of the code is too restrictive, that's where we're looking to make some changes.
So I guess I would be, tend to be in favor of what you're recommending, but I think Commissioner Stebbin had a good point about unintended consequences. Is there a way to, in the code modification, to give the flexibility to the designers and the owners, but have the city have some kind of design review capability where they can say, hey, we like that, but not the, I mean, is there some other criteria that you can judge it by that gives kind of like an architectural control-type thing?
Well, we, in essence, we have that, but I think the best way would be to add some code provisions that only allow those back-of-lot buildings where they have utilized building frontages and required public open space to kind of complete the frontage. And that's a technique that we, essentially a code interpretation that we've applied in other districts, allowing public open space to act as building in terms of our building frontage requirements.
So the community park being on the street doesn't just justify the building directly behind it, but it justifies both of the buildings that don't have a frontage, is that, is that kind of, okay?
Yes. It basically says that the site has full frontage coverage.
Has met its obligation.
And once they do that, then if the site is configured in a way that makes sense for some buildings to not be right on the street, then that's okay.
Okay. Thank you.
So Dave, I think the intent of this requirement, it's been several years, but I think the intent of the requirement is to pull the development up towards the streets and activate the streets, is that right, downtown to some degree?
Yeah. Both define and activate.
So we don't want parking lots on the street with big buildings way back there, right?
Right.
So that's part of the, I guess the idea of open space, public open space, I mean, it seems to me if it's going to be public, it would be a lot more used and a lot more, it would be perceived as public space to a further degree if it was along the street. I don't know that you'd get much activity if it's buried back behind the buildings. So to me, it seems pretty simple. It seems like if they're meeting the requirement for, you know, as much building and open space they can put on the frontage than what they do behind that, it seems like, it seems like, I mean, it makes sense to me to allow what we're talking about. And under the current code, you said open space can or does act as a building?
That's how we've interpreted that, because otherwise, especially in the downtown core, it's really hard to meet the frontage requirements and meet the public open space requirement.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, I guess personally, for me, I like the idea of breaking up the buildings on the frontage and having some spaces where people who are walking by could either use or at least see. So I guess I'd be in favor of what you're talking about. I don't know what the specific code language or amendment would be, but I'm certainly behind the idea.
Okay, so I might ask a couple of questions that are probably going to be obvious. The open space is going to remain equivalent. with the change, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then setbacks for neighboring properties, they won't have to worry about a move, a building for this specific idea, they won't have to worry about a large building moving closer to them?
Correct.
Okay.
Not.
Okay.
Not with this one.
Okay. So I'm, so far, I'm tracking you here. So then my next thing is after raising five children and knowing visibility of what they're up to is important, I would think somebody who's, especially for the location that you're talking about and the density and the kind of activity that's going around in the peripheral with football games and that kind of thing, that a developer might want to have some flexibility to provide security for the people live there so that you don't have traffic going back, foot traffic going back in tucked-away places. And police might appreciate that, too. So if you're saying we're allowing them more flexibility with their open spaces, I have a hard time finding an argument against that. Is that, am I understanding you correctly?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'm going to be difficult to make you switch slides if you don't mind. Can we look at this one, please?
This one?
Yeah, thank you. So what I'm seeing here is the center horizontal walkway. Is that a public access point? It says sidewalk to the left.
It is part of their required public open space. And here, they're using, one of the options for public open space is what the plan calls passages. They have to be 20 feet wide with a minimum six-foot-wide walkway in them. And in this scheme, there are actually three different passages. Actually, I'm sorry. Passage needs to be a minimum 15 feet wide. So, but the public open space, the main public open space needs to be 20 feet wide. So they're using this spine here along with these extensions as their main public open space. And then it continues on here. And we're encouraging them to work with the library to make this a connection to the library. And then, so that's part of their public open space. And then these, this is part of their public open space as well because it meets the 20-foot requirement. These are not part of that, but they are passages that are allowed by the code. So there is, there are two north-south pedestrian connections through the site as well.
Are they required to keep those pedestrian connections open to the public?
Yes.
No gates? And is that why they're allowed to not build out on 96th? Like, nothing's facing 96th as far as the front of the properties?
We did require each of these buildings to, the end units to have their front doors on 96th. We encouraged them to have all four of these buildings have their end units oriented towards 96th. But we don't really, we don't really have a hard requirement for that. So I think the direction that they're going is having the two entrances on 96th and the others to be consistently kind of marching along as row houses along the other two streets. But there will be windows and openings on all of these side facades. They're not, it's not a cookie cutter plan. We wouldn't allow that, to just put blank walls, especially facing the street. But I don't think we would even allow it in the, on these interior gaps as well.
Okay. Can you take me through what the, what the open space down the center horizontal path would look like? You said 20 feet of open space, six feet of sidewalk. So there's going to be grass and benches and park-like amenities?
Trees. This site has a, under the tree retention requirement, if you've been by this site, you'll see that they've removed all the existing vegetation. They are, which they needed to do in order to do all the site grading for the development. So they have a significant tree replacement requirement. I think it's 27 trees in addition to the required street trees. So this plan doesn't show those. But we envision that there'll be a lot of trees along those passages.
All right. Thank you, then. That was good.
Yeah, so, and Dave, on that slide, with compared to the other one, and I see those are, I guess those are two-car garages. In the previous slide, you don't have to go to it, but it, I guess it obviously met the, so there were a bunch of, I guess, it was almost townhomes or, okay, multi-unit buildings or five of them, I guess?
In the upper right here.
Right, yeah. So, and so that is, maybe it's because it's the downtown corridor or trying to encourage walkability and people walking to transit and/or walking in general. Does, do you, I'm just, you're, I'm actually looking for a lot of guidance in that you're a planner and you've been doing this for a long, long time and you're really good at it. So the buildings that are kind of furthest from the parking area are is that kind of a long way to be from a car? Or do you think most of those people are going to be people who maybe won't have a car? And will, yeah, right there. So is the parking, isn't all the parking north there? Are those for the units? Are those the required parking for that development?
Well, this was a very early schematic or even conceptual plan that was never developed to the point where we could actually understand exactly where the parking was. I think the intent was that this access spine here would allow for some sort of tuck-under parking under these buildings. So, but they haven't come back to us with that. I think it will actually, that site will actually wind up being developed more like this. And as far as the pedestrian connections, we did talk a fair amount about that. This site is bigger and it actually needs to meet our maximum parcel perimeter requirement, which basically says this is a big enough parcel that it needs to be divided by either streets or public open space. So in this case, they're providing a linear open space along this side that would have continued on through. And they're also providing a footpath connecting to 98th and the transit stop here. So anyway, to get back to your point, we don't know exactly how the parking would work in here, but the assumption was that there would be some parking, at least partially, under the buildings in addition to the parking.
Okay, because, and maybe I misinterpreted earlier. We're talking about, I guess, the right-of-way going right down the middle there? Or were we, so were we talking about that here?
Yeah.
So, well, will that be, will vehicular traffic be going down that road? Or is that what you're, that's what we're kind of discussing?
Yeah, I believe that was the intent, that this would provide vehicular access to the buildings, some sort of limited vehicular access. But it would be basically a drive aisle and not developed as a full street. I get, I might have confused the issue by saying that if it was developed as a street, even a private street, then we probably could have said that all of these these back buildings were on that street. But that wasn't really the intent and it's probably not what the design really calls for.
Got it. And this is, in this portion in the bottom part, this large open space is, is that a different property? This one or is that?
Yeah, that's a separate property.
So that's why it's just shown as an open space, okay, great.
Yeah. That was, I think, a little artistic license. They turned their neighbor into a park.
With regards to the one on the bottom left, I'm familiar with that house. It's actually a really, really nice old building. And I'm glad that it's getting, having a potential for National Historic Registry. I like what they've done. I like that concept. You were mentioning that with the gazebo and possibly putting, I guess I would be, at this point in time, I'd be more in favor of, say, putting another needed unit there for additional housing and moving, I don't know if that could encourage, you know, maybe larger open space on the right, but I appreciate the open space there. But the circular drive, because it is a spectacular house. And I think it would look kind of odd to have the road. I know it's still, you guys are still, it's still in review. But I guess I would encourage that road to be a little further from that house and maybe a little bit closer to, I don't know, just a little further from the house and down this direction.
Yeah. My understanding is that the circular drive that's dotted in there is the existing condition. And what they're proposing is an access road and these perpendicular parking spaces that would essentially serve the house, maybe serve some guest parking, too. But mostly serve as access to the townhomes or apartments behind.
Got it. Yeah, because I know it is a circular drive now, but it's really more like a gravel strip, isn't it? With a, with a, maybe a cedar tree in the middle or something?
Yeah. It's not quite as formal as the dashed line implies.
Okay, great. Well, that's all the questions I have for now on this topic.
Would you like to move on then to the?
Yeah, and we can always come back to, if people have other comments and come back to those previous ones, because actually just, oh, here, yeah, let's go to this one. Great, thanks, Dave.
So this is still the building orientation question. But it raises the question of, many jurisdictions now have, are allowing this kind of alley-oriented housing. And again, if we change the code to allow, oops, some buildings on the site to not be along or face the street as long as buildings or required open space do fill the street frontages, then this would be allowed unless we specifically crafted the language not to allow alley housing. So I just kind of wanted to get a sense of the commission about how they feel about that kind of alley housing that might be appropriate on smaller urban infill sites like this one.
Yeah, Dave, I mean, I think, you know, maybe in the old part of town where the blocks are smaller, it might be a little more doable or reasonable to expect everything to be on the street. But even at that, I think, you know, the market's going to drive the size of these buildings. And again, I mean, I think just the same as item number one. I mean, I think the more flexibility, the better. And I think the market really should tell us what's going to go on them. And if it's meeting the intent of pulling everything to the front, I'm purely on board with giving more flexibility and predictability, I guess. And I think that's what you're asking for is in the code, let's, you know, let's be clear about that. Correct?
I guess, I also, I mean, yeah, I like the idea of those, I guess I'm going to second Commissioner Cecil's comments there that I guess I don't have much of a problem with the alley. I guess that unit abutting the alley. I don't, I think some flexibility with regards to the downtown and the transition area, I would be okay with that. As long as, you know, obviously the developer's going to develop something that's going to be desirable for the people moving in. So, yeah, I think that flexibility would be nice.
Sorry, I was just looking at that and I guess I have another clarifying question. So is this, this particular property, is this in the downtown core or is this a neighborhood district?
This is a downtown transition district.
Transition district, okay. So looking at those layouts in particular, to me, it looks like buildings with pavement in the middle. That maybe is not the case. Is there some requirement for something green in the middle? I don't see any open space, but maybe I'm missing.
Well, I think the areas that were, chose visitor parking would be paved. But the areas between the buildings closer to the sidewalk would be landscaped in this scheme.
Okay, so your
The
your east-west alley going towards the alley, that would be pavement?
Yeah, the drive aisle here and here would all be paved. So to provide access here, there might be an opportunity to do a little bit of landscaping at the end of this drive aisle. But these, these areas would be landscaped in this scheme.
And is that meeting your public, public space requirement, so to speak?
This one probably doesn't. And this, again, this was their first draft and they've moved away from that for a variety of reasons. But
So we would still, in this scenario, we would still have a requirement somewhere for open space?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Stebbin?
Yeah, I'm all for giving developers some flexibility as long as they are maximizing the, you know, the use of orientating, or orienting the buildings on the main drives first. But again, it kind of gets back to what are the unintended consequences? I would not want to have a situation where all of a sudden the main portion of the buildings are oriented towards alleys. So as long as, again, we're meeting the, meeting the intent and as long as we're meeting the intent and making the maximum use of the correct orientation, I'm all for it.
What would be the alternative? And I'm assuming we're talking about the lower right building on both of these. That's the building in question, right? The
Yes.
Okay. What would, if you couldn't orient that building to the alley, what would be the alternative there?
Well, the alternative is basically shown in the
Oh, okay.
This scheme. So here, they're showing a U-shaped building around a drive aisle leading to tuck-under parking for all of the units. And in this case, they're providing, oops, some of their required open space at the corner and some here that also serves to screen the parking that they're placing off the, directly off the alley.
And then on the lower, the lower right-hand parcel?
Yeah.
They would just essentially have to build a, I mean, because that, there's only the 8185th in the alley that are roads that are adjacent to that property, correct?
So here, the requirement pushes them to one of these lower schemes in the lower right here. Again, a single building that with access along the side of the property line.
I guess my thought is that we need to think about whether the current code really meets what we really want things to look like. To me, if you look at the, if you can go back to the last page, Dave?
Yeah.
Were there, at least these two options on the right are broken up enough where you have some, the facade of the building is broken up and there's some landscaping in between or at least a visual gap. And it seems to me that if we're trying to make things look aesthetically more pleasing from the, from the street, that achieves it more than, more than the single building option. I mean, I think both could look nice, but I don't know that you're gaining, you're really, you're almost cutting off your nose despite your face by forcing this, the option on the left. I mean, alley-oriented units are pretty, getting pretty common these days. So it seems like, this just seems like a wise use of the space. So I wouldn't have, I don't see any problem with that. Do have a question, though, Dave, on that upper one. The drive, the access drive that's shown as being 20 feet, the other one, that one right there, is that does not access 103rd or it does?
No, we wouldn't allow a curb cut there.
So the single access would be out of the alley?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So Dave, just a question on that. So the original premise of our question here is about should the code be interpreted? Should the code be interpreted and amended to allow this, the the alley facing? So, and but I, but Commissioner Clark makes a good point, I do think visually. One of them is more appealing than the other. It it's kind of hard to, from these, from me looking at these, do. So do, the ones that are have to have street fa- that are street-facing, do they? Do they have any type of balcony or anything? I mean, or are they just gonna have a flat face? Uh, will they have a porch or anything on them, or?
Yeah, these are, these are very early schemes, we haven't seen. Uh, well. I don't know, I'll, I'll, I can get back to the the architect to see if they can provide any, any uh. Designs showing what, a little bit more what they might look like.
Yeah, because I may want to, can I tie this in later when we start talking about canopies and balconies?
Seems like from a market value standpoint, the developer would. But want to have something like that. I wouldn't think they'd want to have a flat face on, they would want to have some sort of, you know, modulation or something.
Okay.
Commissioner Jones?
Uh, just two things. One, Commissioner Seidman, I appreciated your caveat to. The goal of keeping as much the front visibility. Maintaining that standard. My que- my, then the. Other side is a question that by allowing this flexibility, does this allow a developer? A better way to manage traffic for the residents coming in and out with their vehicles?
I think they're the same. In either case, we'd require access off the alley.
Because I'm sitting there looking at one big block of a building. If I lived there, trying to navigate my car in and out, I think I might prefer. That plan more, but I don't know if that's significant, a significant difference or not.
There, yeah, there might be some, some differences in terms of ease of access for the residents. I thought you were dealing with the the impacts on on the public. The impact on the public would be equivalent. I think these are, have the same number of units, um, just in a different configuration. But that, that is, that certainly has been an issue in Seattle. They've built some very tight. Townhouses, uh, um, they they have much tighter standards for drive aisles than we have. And uh, and one criticism is that many of those, the garages are already, aren't accessible at all. I I don't think that would be a a major problem here, but the the end units. Get a little bit of tight in terms of maneuvering out of them, but uh, but certainly is doable.
For the, for the plan on the left, is what you're referring to?
Especially the plan on the left, but even the 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 plan on the upper right, uh, the the end units uh.
Okay.
Are are. Are going to be tougher to get in and out of.
Okay, all right, thanks.
With the uh, on the two right versions, would the code allow, or the amendment allow for those homes to be flipped so that the garages were accessed off the alley? Would that be an option for them?
It it could, if that's.
I'll just say, I, yeah, I'm not.
There, and and I should say that there are other factors, uh, uh, fire access is another factor that. Uh, may tend toward, um, or tend against the alley. As um, oriented houses, um, especially on, in this particular case, which, where we've got an existing sixteen-foot alley. Fire was not crazy about, uh, about that, uh, aspect of it. So there are other things that might push them against that, but I guess the real question is, should the, should the zoning code? Preclude that or discourage it, or or should we allow that as a, as a viable solution?
I don't know if you just touched on that, but going back to um, something Commissioner Clark said earlier too, that I agree with. At the same time, um, I I'm kind of a fan of of row houses, the way, you know, some of the ways they've been done in in some of the. Denser cities in the eastern United States and Europe. I mean, I think they can look, they can look really nice, um, depending on how you do the landscaping on the front edge towards the road. And also, I I guess I kind of feel. And so I don't know if this is maybe, maybe a code, code modification question that we can, we can look at in the future is to, is to allow. To cut down on on that requirement with regard for windows. And and I don't, I may be off track here, but with regards to the the row houses, and I think if if a developer does it in a way that's aesthetically pleasing. Row houses can provide even more housing in an area that needs it, and at the same time, creating larger. Areas to maneuver around vehicles and or create additional open space. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts on that. Okay, I guess what I was saying is that the one in the bottom left.
Yeah.
It, depending on how it's done, um, I know the number of units may be equivalent, but it, to me, it does look like maneuverability would be a possi- I don't know. Could be easier with regards to spacing, but.
So, um, jumping to the the setback issues, so the the code currently does allow zero setbacks. As long as the building is at least ten feet from the uh, building on the adjacent lot. So, uh, on this site, on either of these sites, um, they could build right up to the property lawn on either side with. With some agreement from from the adjacent property owner, and then the adjacent property owner, property, when it redevelops, could. Uh, complete that row and and where you'd have a a continuous row, and that's essentially how how it happens in in. Uh, other countries in Europe and and in in the eastern United States, like you said, where you do get these more continuous row houses. The the issue that that was raised here is that if you don't do that. If you choose to set your building back, uh, for whatever reason, you can't get that agreement from the adjacent property owner. Is the requirement that you need to set back ten feet in order to have living space windows, which goes beyond the requirement in the building codes. Is that, um, is that something that we should look at? And it's, that one is kind of related to the the twenty-foot space between buildings, because if, if you do have. A ten-foot setback with living space windows on both sides of a property line, then you're going to have twenty space, feet of space between the buildings, and so. Then then there's a certain luggage between requiring twenty feet between buildings on a, on a, on a single site. It works on a bigger site like the the lot N site, the Dawson site that I showed earlier, but on a tight infill site like this, it does, does create some challenges, so. And that's one that I think we would have to look a li- a little bit harder at in terms of the code language. And and uh, whether we just allow. Uh, the setbacks that are allowed in the, in the building codes, or or whether. To get the character that we're looking for in downtown, we need to either maintain the twenty feet and the the ten-foot. Side setback, or whether we can, uh, we can, whether there might be a compromise that is worth looking at.
I guess, um, so you're, I I guess I didn't cap that at first. You're saying that in this, the current code would require. On the, on the exterior boundary lines of that parcel, that if they, they were going to have windows on the side, it would have to be ten feet from the property line?
That's right.
So, I guess, even in the least dead zones in Bothell, like our, our ninety-six hundred, for example, you can have. Two houses within ten feet of each other that have windows on the side, so I guess I'm not sure why it should be more, or have a a more. Conservative requirement, I guess, in a, in a higher density zone. Is it, is, is there greater discussion about that?
No, I'm glad you brought that, because that is true. So, yeah, indeed, why, why would we require a greater space in our denser district than we require in a, in a single-family zone?
The the single-family zones require a combined, or at least most of them, I think, a combined fifteen-foot side yard setback, which you could do. Seven and a half on each side, or five and ten, or whatever, but, so you could have five on one side, and then the next house was five over, so they could be ten apart. They could also be. Twenty feet apart if they had a ten-foot side yard setback on both sides, but. I guess. I I wouldn't see a reason for going any different than the IBC, which, are you saying that that's a five-foot? Side yard setback, the the international building code? Is that what you're looking at there?
Yeah. It actually allows building, or openings in malls with as little as three foot setback to the property line. So, and that's what we see in many of the detached condominium developments. The the fire code basically requires at least a minimum six feet separation, and 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 so that's, that is allowed. One other thing, uh, you're right that the standard side setback is a maximum combined of fifteen. But in this particular neighborhood, Lower Maywood, the adjacent neighborhood, uh, we do have a special district that allows five on each side.
Oh, okay, so it's even, it's more consistently that way. Is there, why is it, what is the issue with a wall penetration? Is it, is it privacy? Is it? Fire safety, emergency access? What what is the main issue?
The building code requirement is, uh, is safety, uh, uh, fire safety.
That it's unsafe to have a window on on adjacent homes that are too close together, is that what?
Right, and there there are requirements for the rating of of windows when you get within a certain distance and, uh, but they do allow them. Uh, in situations where you're as little as as three feet from the property line, which would be six.
Because I could, I could, if if that's not an issue, the only issue I would see would be. Kind of a privacy issue with the next-door neighbor, if you had a single-family house next door and you had a, 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 a building that was five feet away, or three feet away, but. But again, that's already outright allowed in the, in the lower density zones, so it seems to me to be consistent with that. And then the other thing I want to ask you about, if you go back to that last, the slide before this, sorry. On the upper right. Side, the different, distance between those two buildings right there, that ten feet, you're saying that currently is not per the code?
No, the downtown code requires twenty feet space between buildings.
And and what, it is there, what's the, is there, is that an aesthetic reason, or?
I think it, I think it is somewhat an aesthetic reason, uh, it is. It can also, it could also be seen as consistent with the ten-foot side setback with living space windows. Uh, and so that when, when you have two side, side yards, uh, that you wind up with a twenty-foot setback, and and that should be reflected in the. The space in between buildings internally to a development.
I've, I've always seen that as kind of a different thing. You've got a, this is a new development that we're looking at on the upper right-hand corner. And everybody that buys there is going to understand the the situation, the geometry of the neighborhood, so they're going to decide whether or not they want to purchase there. Based on whether they like that aesthetic or not, and as opposed to being, if it's your neighbor, they, you know, they. May not have a choice, they may already live there, and you're building a home closer to them, but everybody that, these are, everybody that goes in and contemplates buying one of these units is going to know the situation, so. They know what they're getting into, so to speak, and for me, I I think it, tho- those issues as far as aesthetics of separation between units within the same development, the same new development. I think there's reason for flexibility there to allow the developer, the architect, to have some, some say on that, because I I wouldn't ever want to. Suppose that I know better than than a trained architect, what, you know, what the, what what that ought to be, you know, it ought to be like, I think. Commissioner Cecil said a little while ago, that let the market determine that. You know, if 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 that's what's gonna, if that's just gonna work for them, um, internal to the neighborhood, then. I'm not sure, really, we should really have anything to say about. I I would be in favor of of allowing that, um, separation between buildings to go as small as the. IBC would allow. Um, it, I think it is worthwhile, if there is going to be a space to have it be something that can be landscaped and have enough. I guess sunlight and that kind of thing, to have something in between there besides, you know, gravel and a bunch of garbage cans or something like that, that, because that may be visible from, from the outside. That's my thought on that.
One, one condition we might consider in those situations is, um, uh, a requirement that. That when they get to designing the facades, that windows need to be offset, so you're not setting up. You know, dining room windows directly across from each other.
Dave, is that also a, a principle we can apply to the perimeter of the development? In other words, if there's a neighbor who's, you know. House is ten feet from your property, and you're going to go throw some stuff up five feet from the property line or or ten feet. Is that something we can look at, or you can look at as well?
Yeah.
Plunking it down right across from the existing house at the same level, ten feet away. Does the city have any, any way to say, hey, let's, let's not do that?
Yeah, I thi- I think, I could certainly draft some, some, some code language to address that, and I, and I think it would make sense to. To apply that both internally and, uh, one would hope that internally they wouldn't be setting up those situations, but. On the perimeter, so that you're not, uh, you know, adversely impacting the existing neighbors.
Commissioner, yeah, so in general, I support the, the shrinking of these, uh, these setbacks for the the building spacing, and I agree with Commissioner Clark that, uh. We should really leave the aesthetics up to the people that are buying these places, moving into these developments. The only question I have is the fire and life safety. Is this something that we're going to be concerned about, and and do we have a code now for sprinkler buildings? I noticed the other slide you had, is it sprinkler, but are all attached units sprinkled now anyways? Or is there a certain threshold that we?
There, there are thresholds, uh, and, uh, and the, the building code and the fire code, I think, adequately address those, so. I don't think we need to necessarily concern ourselves with those, uh, life safety issues. Uh, it's good to be aware of them and and. And and make sure that we're, that codes are working, uh, are complimentary to each other.
Sure. And Dave, I I know you have a lot on your plate, and firstly, thanks, I forgot to mention earlier, thanks for the together this study session, so la- so much of the last month, with everything else going on. Would it be possible, um, at at our next meeting in December, when we come back to this, I know we're talking about shrinking significantly, it sounds like, this. Setback, potentially. Um, I don't know how hard, difficult, or easy it would be to get some examples of of how this does work in other cities if we shrink it and how that. I I guess actually in in maybe in the Puget Sound region too, because. We, we do have limited sunshine a lot, a big part of the year, so I, I just. It's funny, because I guess earlier I was talking about row houses being directly together, but at the same time, I guess, if we are going to have spaces between units. I I want them to be big enough to be desirable, and. Like Commissioner Clark said, not just a bunch of gravel with a bunch of trash cans in between them, and not so much for the people walking on the street. Uh, but just for the overall feel of the city, people who live there, people on the street. While I agree the market figures out a lot of things, we do have a pretty tart, tight supply right now, so I guess I feel like. People are going to be buying homes even if it's not what, exactly what they want, though, though, I I guess we have a tight supply right now, so. While the market does determine that, I guess I just, I just want to see what some other examples of, for, if we do shrink these, how it's going to work out well.
Okay, yeah, I can bring that back.
One, one more comment. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
Uh, I was just kind of reading this easement from the neighbor idea. Um, so are are we saying that if you're within ten feet? Or closer than ten feet, you would need any, what would that easement look like? Is it, are they giving you an easement? That they're not going to build closer to than ten? From where you are?
Basically, the, the. Basically, the, the, and I'll, I'll bring back a, a, a better description of the exact, actual requirement, but it's, it's essentially that you can build up to the lot line as long as you're at least ten feet away from the built, neighboring building. When that neighbor redevelops, they can also, they can then build up to the lot line if they want.
I see, so it's an existing condition, kind of thing, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I was just gonna speak to Commissioner Velez's comment, and I think that considering the effect of condensed spacing is important, but we also need to think about what we're accomplishing by doing this, and we're creating a lot more frontage on the street, which is a more desirable thing to have, more eyes on the street, more people on the street, and as was said already, a more activated place. And so I think that the trade off is okay, to have some more narrow alleys and, and, and building setbacks than we had in the, in the previous iteration, but I just wanna, I just wanted to say that.
Okay, well, given with that, we'll skip, we'll move on to the third part with regards to the canopies and balconies, if you could.
So, this potential amendment was first raised relative to the proposed City Hall block hotel fronting the Boulevard, and in their early discussions, so we didn't, didn't even get to the point of actual proposals, they were interested in having a, almost a port cochere, a, a canopy that would extend all the way out to the, to the access lane for drop off of their guests. They've since backed off that, and there's, they're now planning to, to operate with the, with the canopy extending, the code allowed six feet into the, into the right of way, although they did say that some flexibility would, that they might consider something larger if they did have flexibility. So, this other example, which is a project that's already under construction, also illustrates the, at least one situation where that limitation of two feet for balconies and six feet for canopies can create, or, or can eliminate some options, some flexibility for the developer, in this case, essentially eliminates the opportunity to do the wraparound canopy slash balcony. So, there, I guess the question would be, should we allow a balcony like this that also serves as a canopy for the, the ground floor space to, to extend to that six foot deadline, or a deadline, a six foot encroachment into the right of way? And should we look at other, writing into the code, some flexibility where we could allow that corner piece to extend perhaps even a little further, some, basically writing in some, some, some opportunity for exceptions, exceptions for special circumstances?
So Dave, quick question for you about, I guess, allowing construction or development into the right of way. Is there, is there some liability for the city of having improvements in the right of way, or is it, how, how does that work? Is there a lease? Is there?
There isn't the way we're currently applying this. We, we do require public area use permits for things like sidewalk cafes or, or merchandising that spills out into the public right of way, but overhead extensions that, again, leave adequate, you know, headroom on the sidewalk and, and within the, the limits have been deemed to be acceptable.
And I'm assuming for the, for the, for the balconies, it's a cantilever, in other words, there's not supports that go down to the street on that? Okay, so it's not taking up any sidewalk space?
Cantilevered or bracketed, yeah.
Did you say, did you say, Dave, that you, there is a lease mechanism for overspill onto the street and cafes? Is that, there currently is a mechanism for that?
There's a, there is a permit, a public area use permit, and there's a fee for the permit. We, and, and some jurisdictions do charge a square foot, an annual square footage fee as well. When we, when we brought that to council, the decision was made not to, to charge a square foot fee at this point anyway.
Is the permit an annual fee or is it one time?
It's, it's a, essentially a one time fee, and, and it can be renewed. It doesn't need to be renewed, and they need to continue to show proof of insurance and, and, and continue to include the city as a additional insured for liability reasons.
But they pay the one, the fee at one time upfront, and then for as long as they want to keep it in place, they, they can do that?
The way it's, the way it's set up now, that's how it works.
Axel's jumping. I personally think that the, that six feet seems a little bit restrictive to me. I don't know, I don't, is that a, so, are there a lot of other jurisdictions? Let's just say, Seattle, what, 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 what type of, I guess, with regards to canopies, what, what type of maximum do they allow, say, in the downtown area?
I'd have to get back to you, but I can bring, bring some analysis like that back to you.
And or some of the other, some of the other cities around us? It just, I, I think, as long as, is the, the balcony, I'm sorry, actually, on the canopies, and this, I was gonna talk about balconies too, if the canopies are, are engineered correctly, I mean, I, I think it's actually, that's a pretty good idea, I think it's just, with a lot of our rainy weather, I think it's, it's nice to have those areas that you can, you can congrain under, walk under, so give the commercial, I guess, the commercial builders the opportunity to have a little bitter, a little bigger canopy.
Yeah, it seems to me on the canopy issue, the bigger, the bigger concern is how much clearance do you still have for people to walk by? Because if, if it's packed under the canopy, because you've got all those people coming out of the hotel, is there still room between the curb and the end of the canopy for people to walk by? And in this picture here, we're showing some street trees and that kind of thing, and so, you know, in terms of, you know, how much do we go into the right of way, I guess maybe the question might want to be, how much clear do we need to provide the public to get by it? Maybe that's a, another way to look at it. I mean, I like that idea, I totally like that idea of having that kind of stuff, and, because I think that activates, you know, more, more activity in downtown, but there are people walking by too, so.
Yeah, got it.
What, what is the sideways, the sidewalk requirement? Is it, does this, what you see in this picture, pretty, pretty typically have a very broad sidewalk out in, at the entrance to these buildings?
This is probably one of our wider sidewalks, and this rendering may even exaggerate it a little bit. It, and it's wider on the corner because of the curb, curb bulbs. I believe the sidewalks along the Boulevard are a total of fourteen feet wide. On one eighty fifth, they would be, I think they're twelve feet wide, but on many of the streets, it goes down to nine feet. So another factor in addition to having adequate sidewalk space is street trees and making sure that the canopies aren't conflicting with the, the crowns of the street trees.
So Rod, or Commissioner Cecil, were you thinking that, that the fact that the canopy extended further out might encourage more tables and that kind of thing that would constrict the sidewalk? Is that what you're getting at?
Well, I guess when I'm thinking of hotel canopies, I'm thinking of, people are coming out of a hotel and they might be waiting for a valet or something, but they're waiting at that canopy so that people can, can wait there without getting wet, right? Or even if it's not raining, and so it tends to create a, a group of people, and if there are, if there are other activities going on and people are, you know, walking from Pocchini to the ranch or whatever, and, and so you've got some cross traffic and you've got maybe some congestion there at, at the, where the canopy is, and so if the canopy goes all the way to the curb and there's just nowhere for people to walk, in this case, it might be okay, they might be able to walk across the little side road there, but I, I, I don't think you'd want to, you know, as a general rule, I think you'd want to give people enough space to, to use the sidewalks.
So would it be appropriate to, to consider having the, the width of the canopy or the balcony, whatever, however you want to term it, be a function of how wide the sidewalk is, a certain percentage or something like that, of, so that we were sure that it wouldn't extend, say you had an eight foot sidewalk, you wouldn't end up with an eight foot canopy that completely covered the sidewalk? Maybe that would be one way of addressing that. And then also, as far as the space above, I, I like the idea that, what do they call it, a habitable balcony, is that, or a habitable?
Habitable canopy.
Canopy. I, I like that idea, I think if, however, I think that if, if a developer chooses to take that option and they're going out into the public right of way, they should be, probably be, probably be subject to the same permit and fee that somebody at ground level would be, or at least a fee of some kind, because they're essentially getting, they're getting square fish, square feet that, square footage and benefit that belongs to the city, and in most cases, there's some sort of compensation for that, or should be, I think. And I think as far as the, the fact that the corner protrudes more into the right of way than, than the rest of it does is, there should be something the code that just allows for that, I think, because that's just geometry, that's the Pythagorean theorem of, you know, you gotta, sticks out five feet on the corner, it's gonna stick out seven feet, that's, there's no way around that unless you want to radius it, but I don't think a building like that would look very good with a radius balcony on it. So I think it should just be allowed outright, if it's a five foot balcony, that accounts for, you know, the fact that the corner's gonna stick out further.
And the code does allow for special treatment, corner treatments of, on buildings, so I think that would be consistent with that.
Just, just a couple of comments. One is just thinking about, is it going to profoundly affect how rainfall, stormwater is handled coming off the building and into the trees that we have? I, you know, just want to know how that, is that language going to be there so that the trees aren't going to know a difference of the water that's coming off and being shed off the building? Then the second thing is, I can't see this being a problem for this particular building, but we have hills in other parts of downtown Bothell, and I worry about canopies and balconies coming out so far where there's an incline, a hill that could obstruct your side, side of traffic. And that, that would be my, my only caveats, is making sure that it doesn't impede your ability to see oncoming cross traffic.
That's a good point, yeah. We do have design standards that protect the, the site triangles at, at intersections, so I think, and they, although they do mostly focus on objects, you know, that, that, coming from the ground, extending into that. So, I'll, I'll, I'll make sure that the, that standard does deal with vertical protrusions too.
In regard, with regards to the balconies, and Commissioner Clark, you were talking, you, I think you said balcony a minute ago, but you maybe, or did you say a five foot balcony or canopy? Maybe you said canopy, not balcony, I don't know.
Well, I was referring to this particular illustration where they've got a habitable cap, canopy with, which is, has walking space or standing space above it, was what I was referring to.
Yeah, that's exactly what you said, that's correct. So, not looking at it as a habitable canopy, but as a habitable, I guess, balcony. So right now, the, the code is two feet, is that correct?
For balconies, it's two feet.
To stick out is?
Balconies, bay windows, yeah.
How do other commissioners feel about that, two, two feet mark? Does that seem reasonable? It, it seems, I guess, I guess, I guess balconies generally have a setback too that, that goes into the unit.
Yes.
But I've seen, I guess I've seen a lot of maybe new development around where it's almost like a faux balcony, it's like, there's like, I'm not a huge fan of that, so I, I prefer to see more kind of real balconies
Right.
rather than just having the rail. I'm not sure if Bothell allows for that, but I feel like I've seen that around, I don't remember if it's Bothell or not.
You know, where you open the sliding door and there's a rail right there?
Yeah, 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 it's like.
Is that, is that, do you think because of the two foot, or some kind of limitation on that?
No, I think that's, that's, I think it's just economics, and they're, they're referred to as Juliet balconies, so they do give you a chance to, to open up and, and, and lean out into the street, but.
Does, does anyone else think that we should look at something a little bit larger?
Well, as a general rule, and, and I am not a developer, so I don't know this, but it, it seems to me that a developer would be able to charge more for living space than for just a patio, a balcony, if you will. And it, it would seem to me that that would be why they may have a two foot balcony as opposed to a four, or five, or six foot, that you can actually put a, you know, small cafe table and a couple of chairs. There again, I'm, I'm a firm believer of let's let the market decide what, what actually would work, so I would have no problem taking a look at, you know, if, if, if we're looking at, at, at a six foot canopy, maybe we do allow on, on some buildings, a four or five foot balcony as well. And, and by the way, I, I really, I, I really appreciated Commissioner Clark's comment about making the canopies a percentage of the width of the sidewalk. That to me makes, that, that just makes a great deal of sense to me. So if you've got a fourteen foot sidewalk, you would not have the same limitations to a canopy that you would on an eight foot sidewalk.
I agree with that, and earlier when I was talking about extending it out, I, I certainly wasn't at the attention to, to bring it all the way out to the street, but, but I also appreciate that, and I think that would, I think it's a good direction to go with regards to the percentage of, of the sidewalk for the, for the canopy size. So you, so anybody else? Thoughts on canopies?
I have a couple of questions. Would this habitable canopy only apply to the second floor? Or could it be building wide? And it, does it only apply to the corner, or could they wrap the whole building with it?
My inclination would be to, to limit it to the second floor where, where it actually does function as both a canopy and a, and a balcony. And yes, it could potentially go the full width of the building.
Okay, so, I mean, to me, it seems like there's another way to accomplish this, and that's just to set back the second floor, and then you have your balcony, and it doesn't protrude over the right of way. I'm, I'm all for big canopies and covering the sidewalks and giving people weather protection. In fact, I don't even think the percentage thing, though it's a good idea, is important here. Down here, it might be relevant where you have twelve and fourteen foot sidewalks, but up in Old Bothell where they're building some big buildings, there's only what, six foot sidewalks, or I don't know what the width is on those, but it seems like it would still be important to have weather protection, but by doing it as a percentage, you would lose too much, and people would have to hug the building wall to get that protection. So I, I would be, I would be in favor of not doing a percentage, but sticking with a, with a set distance of the sidewalk, and then also considering not doing habitable canopies at all, and just, just giving them the option to set back the building because that gives more sunlight into the street as well when you start doing things like that, and it kind of takes away the impact of these large buildings on the downtown. And then, yeah, one more question on that, I, I hadn't really heard of these habitable canopies before, so I, I'm curious, when you do, when you have balconies and, and these habitable canopies, do you have to do anything with the airspace rights? Or, I mean, the, I assume a builder has airspace rights over their building, so it would probably be the same for the city right of way? Is, is that something that has to be factored in, or down the road if the city needs that airspace to put a pole or some type of utility function, are they able to come back and get that, or are these just permanent easements?
Well, they're not easements, they're just. Well, they're not easements. Uh, they're just uh allowances that, that are permanent. And, and so um I'll also get uh further feedback from our, our public works department since they control the right of way. But um, but those uh, and they're, they, they have already expressed some concerns about um uh allowing uh, uh too much uh intrusions. But I, uh, they, they are accepting of the, of the current rules for canopies, the six foot and, and, and and also the balcony bay window uh uh protrusions as they are. So if we expand those too much, I think that, that could be an issue. We, but I'll, I'll, I'll come back with some, some feedback from them on, on kind of what, where they see the limits.
Thanks. And, and I think I just threw a lot of questions at you. So I'm just gonna try to get one clarification. So you envision if this was something that we adopted for the habitable canopy to build into the code? That they could only have it on a certain percentage of the building corner or something like that? Or how do you see that working?
We would allow, excuse me, we would allow a continuous canopy uh along a building. So uh I would be inclined, my first thought would be to, to uh, uh, if we did allow that second floor balcony to, to uh act as a canopy to allow on the full frontage.
Okay. Thank you.
But I'd certainly welcome uh other points of view and input on that.
I have another point of view. Would it be possible to restrict that uh bigger habitable canopy to be just over commercial spaces? If there, if you had ground floor residential, maybe that wouldn't be so appropriate. Maybe it'd be, make more sense to have it be either, you know, uh not protrude out as far or whatever. But I think it's, it's really important, I think, particularly in the Northwest where you have a cafe or something or something where people can have the opportunity to be outside but not get soaking wet. I, I, I don't know. I think a lot of people have pets and that kind of thing. They like to go sit in a, at a coffee shop, even if it's raining outside, as long as they were sitting under a six foot canopy and, and maybe, and I think it is appropriate. And I also think if we're trying to activate the streets and create this sense of um busyness, if you wanna call it that, or, or, or neighborliness, that why restrict that to the ground floor? If we could, if you have the opportunity to have people sitting on a balcony on the second floor, whether it's a restaurant or an office space, or even just people standing and looking over. It seems like that creates more vibrant, activated, if that's the word we wanna use, um, streetscape. And so I'm not sure it should be restricted. Um, not sure how I feel about that. Um, but I do think that it, this, this, it seems almost like an ideal setup right here because it's a, it's about, it's a canopy over, over retail space and it doesn't show it continuing down the street. I don't know why. Maybe those are, do they, are, are residential units allowed on the ground floor in, in the downtown area?
Well, not in this particular situation that uh along Bothell Way. There is a ground floor pedestrian oriented retail requirement. Um, along one eighty fifth, uh, they could uh in theory do uh, do uh ground floor residential, Six Oaks has ground floor residential on one eighty fifth, although some of those spaces are uh converting to commercial spaces. And then this particular development, uh, the, when you turn the corner from this uh image here up towards Popkinie Field, they do along that, those frontages, they're building uh live work spaces, um, uh which could be either. But my understanding is that they're, they're leasing out as, as a office space.
Commissioner Hampton, I think your, your point is good about the percentage thing. I think it would, we'd have to avoid it being a straight percentage cause there could be unintended consequences of that too. But maybe there's a, I just think that these two foot canopies that stick out are kind of a little bit useless, you know, you, you, I, I, we're downtown all the time or wherever and you're walking down the street trying to stay out of the rain, but there's somebody coming the other way. So somebody has to jump out of the way, you know, it seems like if it were four feet, then you probably avoid that for the most part. But um, I, I just think something, something a little bit bigger and if, and, and again, having the space on top of it, I think is creates more vibrancy too. So, thanks.
So clarification Dave. So we're talking about these habitable canopies and I'm looking at that one there. I'm assuming that the, the space under the canopy is exterior space. In other words, you're not, you're not under the edge of that canopy. You're not reclaiming additional interior space for the first floor. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so.
It could be used as a sidewalk cafe, but.
Yeah, yeah. So maybe I'm getting my words wrong here too. And I, when I'm thinking about canopy, I was, I was, because of the hotel application, I was thinking more along the lines of a kind of an isolated canopy. When I look on the rendering here, I'm seeing what I would call awnings along, you know, along the street and, and maybe those are one and the same. Is that, is that the case or is this?
Yeah, uh, awnings and canopies are, are we, they're slightly different. Uh, um, I could bring back some illustrations from our signage code that addresses uh how it defines the two or, yeah.
Okay. So they're not exactly the same, but they're similar or they are pretty much the same?
They're, they're very similar, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I uh, it seems like if we're talking about awnings, which I would call awnings, um, I would, I wouldn't imagine wanting to limit those anywhere. I mean, I think we'd wanna allow them above any door or above any establishment or whatever. The can, in the canopy, I guess it's the same thing. Um, but again, I think that's just the main issue is what I think has been brought up here, which is you know, you need to leave some room for people to walk by, so.
And with the uh habitable canopy, um, so that could, you could essentially put, you know, you could put a lot of people on there. So I guess it would, it would be, would, what kind of code would it have with regards to how many, you know, people you could have on there? Or would it be engineered to?
It would need to meet the, the building code.
Okay. It wouldn't be, okay, got it.
Just as a point of reference, you look at one of those tiles, those are two by two. Those are two feet wide. That's not very wide for a canopy.
Yeah. So we're, we're, I'm not proposing anywhere that, that canopies be limited to two feet. The, the current uh requirement is that the balconies can't extend more than two feet into the right of way. They can, of course, extend back into the building and, and you'll see on, on this rendering, the balconies above uh are, I think, uh, big enough to be uh useful to, to actually uh, uh, sit out on. And that's partly because the, the building, it isn't right up to the, the right of way. And again, that's another way, if somebody that wants to do a wider canopy, certainly can set their building uh back. Uh, although the, the code encourages buildings right up to the, to the uh property line in downtown core. But just because of the configuration, the fact that all of the, the parcels aren't perfectly square, sometimes they are setback uh portions of that frontage are setback. One other thing uh with regard to balconies, the size of balconies is that um the downtown code, in addition to the requirement for public open space, there's a requirement for private outdoor space that balconies can uh be used to meet that, but they have to be, have a minimum dimension of, or minimum width of four feet. And I think a minimum area of, uh, I believe it's sixty feet. Um, so, so there are other parts of the code that do encourage uh balconies that are, are, are actually usable. We don't prohibit it, prohibit the Juliet type balconies. Uh, and they may be appropriate in some areas, but, but they don't help with that private outdoor space requirement.
So I just wanna make one more comment. I just wanna make sure that it's understood that when I talked about the limitation and the percentages of the, of the awnings, I think we'll call them awnings now, I wasn't trying to limit those. I, I was just trying to say that I would, I would rather not put a percentage on there that would limit him in other parts of town. Because I'm all for wider awnings, if you will. And, and I think of an example, just an anecdote from walking to work almost every day down in Union Station. And there's a specialties cafe with little tables out front and the awning stretches just to the edge of those tables. And so I'm stuck walking in the rain when these empty tables are sitting there under the awning. That awning went, one more ceiling tile, I'd be dry. So I'm in favor of, of bigger awnings and, and just wanted to uh, to comment on that after Commissioner Clark brought that up. And I just wanna make sure everybody was clear where I stood. Thanks.
I've had many uh bakery item at that place in the past and I know I walked under the same raindrops that you did there.
Any other input? Let me just, I wanna do a quick recap. One, to make sure that I, I got your feedback right. And two, uh, we do have a couple of members of the public that are uh actually proponents of one of the projects I use as an example. And uh they missed that discussion. So I wanna touch on that real quickly. So on, on this issue, uh, I did hear some interest in uh, on the canopy issue and uh looking at, at some ways to make the code a little bit more flexible uh within reason. And I'll bring back some, some other examples uh, uh for you. Uh, on the uh space between buildings, uh, again, uh, I, I did hear interest in, in um looking at uh ways to uh, uh, allow uh as an option, the kind of development that uh breaks up the building into, to smaller uh segments, even if it, it does mean reducing that space between buildings. Uh, so I'll, I'll look further into that. Sorry. And uh, sorry. And, and on the building setbacks issue, uh, I'll also bring back uh further analysis on that. And uh, here we go, building setbacks. And um, uh, and further analysis of the, the building code requirements and how those uh interface with the zoning code requirements. Building orientation, I think I heard consensus uh that the, essentially the interpretation that we're utilizing is, is valid and, and, and that uh, including that in the code language would uh, would uh help, help clarify that. And here we get to the example that uh, that uh you provided, that the, our, our guests here uh provided in a, a preliminary meeting. And so I did hear that uh, that you're uh, again, supportive of making some code changes that support the interpretation that we have uh been using that uh allows uh buildings uh on the back of the site where the frontage, where, where buildings are providing adequate uh frontage coverage. Buildings and required open space are requiring uh, uh, are providing adequate frontage coverage. And I did also hear some support uh on this particular scheme for uh, for the staff of feedback that uh this would probably, would be strengthened uh by uh perhaps moving that driveway and creating a, a site for another building that would sort of continue that uh, that street frontage uh of the existing house. Uh, and uh towards the existing uh single family residential area.
Oh, and Dave, I think Commissioners Orange had one question, quer- clarification.
Could you page back where you had the table? Cause it's not in our packet. I just wanted to get its number so I could go.
And I'll have this information in the packet as, as uh Commissioner Vleat uh said, this, this packet was uh pretty hastily assembled last week.
It was, it was done well. I just wanted to look at this table. I can, this is on, I can find this in the city, can I?
I'll, I'll include it in your next packet. Um, uh, but uh, yeah, if you, if you do wanna look it up in the International Residential Code, it is table R three oh two point one, parentheses one.
Okay, thanks.
And Dave, just with regards to the packet, I think this is a very appropriate sized packet for a study session, just for future reference, in my opinion. It just kinda gives us flexibility to be able to talk and doesn't create a huge workload for you. And just one other thing, I don't know if you mentioned it, I, I would be interested in possibly looking into extending the um balconies further than two feet. I don't know if you mentioned that, but.
I think I got that in my notes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, great. Well, let's see, with that, I guess we can go ahead and just close the study session. We don't need anything official, correct?
Correct.
All right. And, but we did have some uh members of the public come join us. I don't, did you all have anything you wanted to speak on?
Uh, we just wanted to come see the process and everybody's thoughts, I guess.
Okay. Well, thanks for coming down to join us and feel free to pull aside afterwards. Now with that though, we would, we do need to um do we have a motion to go ahead? Yeah, we have action to go ahead and move it ahead to December?
Yeah, there's no action required. Uh, we will uh, we're scheduled to bring this back uh, uh, on December fourteenth. In between now and that session, we are also planning to have a, and that will be a public hearing. We will have a public session, I mean, a study session on the housing strategy plan uh update uh and affordable housing measures uh on the seventh, at least. And that's still listed as tentative, but I think, I'm, I think that uh is gonna work out that Arch will come and, and uh start what will probably be several meetings uh, uh with you uh to, to flesh out those updates to the housing strategy plan.
Okay, great. So a public hearing continued on this, what we just talked about in the study session night will be on December fourteenth.
Again, not continued, but we'll, we'll open that.
Well, sorry, you open it, correct.
Can I ask a quick question? So on the seventh, uh, when Arthur comes, um, I guess process wise, has he been able to talk to the city council as well? I, I feel like we're kinda going into a phase two here where we might be going, re-going over a lot of information. Like, maybe I'm wrong, but are we gonna be making ground or are we just gonna be kinda regurgitating?
So what the council?
I'm not trying to be facetious. I
I think what the council balked at was, was uh, um, the, was the, were the code amendments that you recommended associated with the, with the up zones. And what they wanted to see was uh to look at the whole housing strategy plan and to see how that, those actions fit into the, the, the larger strategy. So I think this will actually, we'll, we'll be moving the ball forward and providing the broader context that council wants to see uh in order to take up those, those uh plan and code amendments.
Thank you.
Is there any old business?
Actually, I do have one old business item. Um, we, the Williamson uh findings, uh, I circulated, I got a few comments back, including some from Commissioner Fleet that I haven't recirculated and, and I uh should have tried to bring them here so that we could have that discussion. But uh it's a fairly minor uh change that I will be uh sending to you for uh, so that we can kinda get consensus approval and, and uh signature on those before we take that, those to uh council for a public hearing on December sixth. Which actually brings up another question. It would be good to have some planning commission representation uh at that council meeting on December sixth.
I'll plan on being there. If anybody else wants to join. Does anybody else wanna be there on the sixth? Well, it's out there if we wanna join in, so.
I have a question about the calendar if I could ask.
Sure.
So our public hearing on the twenty sixteen miscellaneous downtown code amendments is mid-December. Is it something we don't have to finish by the end of the year because it's a code amendment? We can do it next year?
Yes.
So we'll just switch it to twenty seventeen and be good to go?
Yes. And, and since that's the first time you'll actually see the code language, um, you know, if you're ready to, to, to pass it and, and uh pass it on to, to council, I, I can certainly bring it with findings. But um I anticipated that there'd probably be one more hearing at least.
No, I, I think that I'm gonna be absent at that meeting, so absent from that meeting.
I actually wanted to bring that up, that I thought there might be at least two people absent from that meeting and it might be worthwhile to find out whether we're gonna have a quorum, if, if that's the case.
That's a good idea. December fourteenth. December 14th?
December 14th, okay.
Anybody else?
I'll be there.
I, I won't be there.
I won't be there.
That being said, would it be, is it critical to do that on the 14th? Could we potentially move to the, I'd like to, I would like to be there, but I can't. So, and I think probably Commissioner Hampton feels the same way, but, um, is it, is it something that we absolutely have to do a public hearing on before the end of the year, or could we do it on the...
We're, this is the initial public hearing, right? We'll have others, so even if...
So it will for sure be a, be continued beyond the 16th?
Well, that's, that's entirely up to you. Uh, you can make that decision right now to perhaps have a, a, a quick session, uh, to, uh, receive code amendments, no findings, uh, and with the intention of continuing it on, uh, you can, uh, postpone it, uh, to, uh, next year. Um, uh, I know that there's, I, I think there's been some concern that, uh, that, uh, commission does continue to, to, to try to, uh, hold at least two meetings a month. Uh, so, uh, that's, that's why we're bringing it back, that...
Yeah, I'd like to encourage us to maybe stick with that date, but at the same time, uh, go in with the, uh, go in with the, uh, the realization that we want to give Commissioners Clark and Commissioners Hampton and anybody else. Well, hopefully there won't be anybody else missing. There can be one more person missing, I guess, and then we still have a quorum, but, so we'll continue it in the new year, we'll have the discussion. If that's okay?
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. And you have any reports today, Dave?
No.
Is there any reports from members? You have a motion to adjourn then?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.